District School Committee, and I would ask that those who so choose, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So we are meeting tonight as I sent communicated in a previous email. That one of the things the school committee has to do, which unfortunately has. Hi Mike, fallen by the wayside only because we haven't had to do it is the school committee per policy GCBA. Is responsible for setting salary ranges for non-union personnel. And I think the last time we engaged in that was when Todd was hired. But according to the policy, we're supposed to review the ranges every year prior to July 1st. And so I have spoken to Brooke and we will begin to remedy that and make it part of what we do. And typically, it is the Personnel Subcommittee that begins that process with the Superintendent. And then brings recommendations forward to the committee as a whole. Human Resources plays a role in looking at comparable districts and providing us with comparative data to help us set our range. But Brooke had informed us that, Nesdek had informed her. That our salary range for high school principal positions. Is is not competitive with what they're seeing. And so I asked for this special meeting. So we can consider a revised salary range. In light of the fact that we're poised to hire a new principal at the high school. So at this point, I will turn the agenda over to Brooke and Anne Marie.
Great, thanks. I'll just tee it up and then Anne Marie, I'll turn it over to you. So you're absolutely right. I think that that was a great tee up for all of us. I I think at this point in time, we're looking tonight for you to just give us a range. I guess a newly revised range in essence, and Anne Marie's got more levels, a greater level of specificity on this. And remember that we're looking for the current data right now of what folks are being paid in our areas right now. And right now, Neshova Regional High School is in about that 135, 136,000 range. And so with that, we do know that we're up against other school districts that are also looking for high school principals that are pretty comparable to us. And their salary range is substantially higher than ours. And so you really have to make the decision, are you just going to stick with the range that you've got? Or are you going to seek something a little bit more comparable? Hence the reason for this particular meeting. So with that, we send Anne Marie off to take a look and see what she could find out about other school districts and whatnot. And then Anne Marie, if you can just do a quick report out and then we can open up for discussion.
Thank you, Brooke. Yes, I contacted as many of the local high schools as I could to find out where we stand. In our general area, they seem to run, there's a couple that are lower than us. On the 128, 130, 134, we're at 136 right now. The bulk of them though are in the 149, 150, and as high as 155 and 155. Is that, so there's, you know, a bit of range, the ones that we like to think that we compare ourselves to are on the higher end of that, of course. So I think, Brooke, did you, you wanted to make a.
So Anne Marie, you said 155, but we know that there are districts out there right now that are advertising that are higher.
That's right, that's right. We know one that's advertising right now 160. We know that there's one, not too close to us, but not a world away either, that's at 165. Yes. And I also looked at the districts that are currently advertising for principals, and they're right in that, and they're right in that ballpark. So the people with whom we would be competing for new principals are in that higher end.
So with that, I think we kind of leave it open to you folks to just get a flavor of what your thoughts are. Do we stay where we're at at that that range of the one in the 130s? Do we, do we bump it up? What's your pleasure? What do you see us going after at this point in time? We would recommend that we raise it, quite honestly. I think, or we're not going to be able to attain and retain quality people. That's our concern is that we'll see people jump from post to post, and that's something we want either. So so we we open it up for discussion for food for thought from you.
So if you're interested in commenting, please raise your hand and I will recognize you. So let me see, we have Steve Wells. Mike. And then Amy, anyone else? Okay, so Steve, you want to go first, please? And then I'll circle back and make sure everybody has an opportunity.
I have, first, I have a question. Is this, are we just, we're just talking about the range for the principal of the high school at this point, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right now, yes, that's correct.
My my feeling is since we haven't done this in a number of years, that was certainly, certainly. Ripe, let's put it that way, to do to do it at this point, especially since we want to acquire the best possible candidate. From the three that were that were questioned last week while we had our meeting. And I would, I would not be averse adverse to seeing it's bumping this significantly at this point. To make us not only competitive, but to make us extremely attractive.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, so. I agree with Steve about. About bumping up what we're able to offer. I think if we want to be competitive, then we need to pay for the talent that we want to attract. I guess what I am curious about is, given that we have like a, you know, whatever our our budget is somewhere between 55 and 60 million, right? This is, this is a drop in the bucket, but I'm wondering in a qualitative way, how does this, or where does this? Enter into us in the budget season? Does that mean that our administrative line item goes up? Or is this just a, I mean, I know that some of this is not within the purview of the school committee, so I'm just trying to understand. How that impacts the budget and where where we're able to manage that from the budget's perspective.
I I don't know that that, I, and please don't feel offended when I say this because it's not meant to be offensive at all. I think what you need to do is focus right now on what you you feel the best thing is to do for this position. And then we have to figure out how are we paying for this? Do you know what I mean? How how does this fit together with the rest of the the budget? I think, you know, do it, does it? It can be any number of things, quite frankly, Mike. It can mean cuts here or there. We don't, we're still finding out what monies are coming in right now. So I I don't know that I would. I don't know that I would focus on it at this moment in time. That's not a negative. It's just that I think that your focus really should be on. Do you want to raise that or not? And then it'd be who's Pat and I to go back in and figure out, okay, where is this money coming from?
If I could just interject, like, one way to look at it is you look at what the retiring principal is currently making, which is about 136.5. So we know that we have that much budgeting. So the delta would be whatever we decide and that. So we're not looking for vast sums. And then, I don't know how it figures into the budget, but in my previous lives and looking at things like that. When you have people that retire, there's a differential, usually a significant one between folks who retire and new folks coming in. So there are, and I'm not saying that's where they find, where one finds money in a budget, but just from my experience, that's all I wanted to offer.
And that's certainly one of the places, Mike, and I think I had mentioned that to you the other day when we talked. So it's one of the places that you look to find some different, that delta. It's not the only place, but it's one of the places.
All set, Mike?
Um, yeah, if I have more.
If not.
Welcome back, I'll come back, but Amy had her hand up. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. I fully support bumping up the salary range to keep us competitive. With comparable districts, I think. You know, we, we, the high school is the flagship of our district. And it's at a crossroads right now. We really need to be able to bring in. Somebody who is not just qualified, but but superb to help lead us, you know, through the changes ahead. You know, I feel like if we don't, if we don't do this, then we stand to, then we're we're going to regret it going forward. I took down some notes, too. I think, I want to follow up on one thing that Mike said related to the budget. Because I, I think that part of the concern with adjusting the salary range was how it would affect other. The pay range for our existing administrators. And so I guess my feeling is we need to do, we need to adjust the range now to be able to check the best candidate. And then put a longer term plan in place to adjust everybody else's salaries over time.
And Amy, I totally, totally agree with you. And that's what I see coming here as well, is that there's like a course correction of sorts that needs to be. To be made, but it doesn't have to be done in one year. Like, you can look at doing something more strategic. And I think, I think I said that to Mike, too, when he and I talked, I see something playing out over the course of the next, you know, two to three years type thing. I don't see it all happening at once. I guess I think the the focus right now is that high school position and where are we at? But it's not lost on me, and I don't think it should be lost on us, that there's an implication thereafter. So and so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Someone else? Steve, I'll get to you if someone else doesn't have a comment or question. Leah?
So the range is meant to give you flexibility, is that right, Brooke? So that you can kind of judge the credentials of the person, their experience level. And so depending upon the candidate, we could find ourselves moving toward toward the higher end versus the lower end. And I just wonder, are we talking about moving up to a cap of 160? Is that something that we're talking about right now? Or like, what are we, what are we?
That's, that's.
I support it. I I fully support it. Just on the record, really quick. Your administrative team is, in my opinion, top notch. You have amazing people literally across the board. And that, and you know, to replace Steve, we need somebody who is equally good and, you know, experienced. And so to to bring on somebody who is superb, like Amy said, is critical. So I totally support this. But I'm just wondering what the number, what you're thinking the number would be.
So I think, I think anywhere from that, you know, if you take a look again at the numbers that Anne Marie had put out there, you know, that 145 to 160, 165 range, I think would be appropriate. And and you're absolutely right, Leah. It really depends on the candidate that we end up getting. Like, there are a lot of things that come into play that that it's too soon to tell right now, as I sit here tonight, what that's going to look like. You know, and you really do need some range. Sorry, Kathy.
I'm cutting you in line. At the PSC mirror, do you want to speak about the PSC meeting today and and what we discussed and recommended?
Okay, and and this is one of our, as I was reviewing to our handbook, it's on page 17. That is, as Kathy said, in terms of policy, that the Personnel Sub reviews job descriptions and salary ranges. And recommends to the to the full school committee for approval. And so that's what we're doing. And Anne Marie did come to our meeting earlier today. And so our recommendation and vote was to. To recommend to you the 145 to 160 range for the the principal. So that's what, that's what we were recommending to you, but certainly. Open to more discussion.
Thank you. Steve, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, if we, if, let's, let's say we have candidate A and we we offer them $160,000 to start. Does that mean, what does that mean going forward to that particular candidate? Because obviously, in the in the years, let's say, two years, three years down, let's say, one year down the road. That candidate wants to, would like to get an increase and this, and they, you know, to us, they would prove that they're, or to you, Brooke, they would prove. That they were certainly worth an increase. Are we locked into that 160? Do we have to come back and revisit that one more time, another time to raise? In other words, what I'm saying is, if we're saying the hiring range is 145 to 160, we hire them at the top of the range. Does that mean they're maxed out?
So I I'm going to turn that question back to Kathy, because to be honest with you, I have never had a school committee that's done this particular, done it this way. So I don't know, because it's always been left to this discretion of the superintendent. So I think Kathy probably has more experience than I do, like, and again, I think I said this to Mike, too, the other day when we talked. You haven't had much turnover in five years. You have very little turnover, which is one of the reasons why we're in this position right now. Because all that's happened really is that you've done pretty mu, pretty much, I wouldn't say 100%, but pretty much just COLA increases. Right? And so, you know, that, that's exactly why we're sitting in this position right now, saying, hey, wait a minute. By just doing the COLA increases, this has actually had your, you know, your admin fall behind a little bit. So so I'm going to turn that over to Kathy, because I don't know.
If we were exercising our due diligence and following the policy. And in our defense, prior to Brooke being here, the the policies weren't followed at all. So we, we, as Brooke says, if something comes up, we can do it. But if we add to our job description for PSC. The real specific part of the policy that says a salary ranges for non-union personnel will be reviewed by the the committee. Prior to July 1st of each year, then that would keep us on top of things, even if we're tweaking it based on a COLA. So then we would see the range move accordingly. So that, that's how I would answer it, that it's got to be on the list of things to do. And we just have to make sure that we exercise our due diligence. That's a good point, Steve. No, who was, who made the point? Steve? Okay, sorry. Now Mike wants to, has his hand up. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation from the Personnel Subcommittee to increase the range. from between one hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty thousand.
And may I have a second?
I second that.
Leah seconds. Is there any discussion or questions? Rich?
Yeah, I'd like to tap the brakes a little bit. I mean, I I definitely want to get the best candidate. I just have some concerns in this budget cycle about increasing any of the line items more you know, than a than really level services. So I just want to lodge that concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? Steve?
Yeah, my only my only concern, I I I fully support this. My only concern is that since the composition of the committee basically changes more or less in May, that we shouldn't thrust it upon a new Personnel Subcommittee to have to deal with this. It should be done prior to May, where the experienced people on the Personnel Subcommittee before they may go out of office or whatever, have the have the opportunity to make these recommendations. If we let it go till June, the odds are most of the people in the the odds are that many of the people in the committee would be changed and or some of the people in the committee would be changed and some of the people in the school committee would be changed. And they would be totally new to something like this and be hit with it right away. We've had, you know, we've had a couple of issues that our newer members from last May walked into and it's kind of like, you know, walking into a swamp. Sometimes, sometimes, sometimes.
And I will get on it with our, it's we get a lot of work to do, Mary. Good thing that we're hunkered down and quarantined and have a lot of time on our hands. Mike?
Thank you. So so, Rich, I I obviously share your concerns on such a tight budget season, especially where our town is. I don't, I don't believe, and I am going to take what Brooke said at face value, that they will have to shave here and there in order to make this happen. Um, I don't think that level funding in this case is going to serve the district moving forward. And I think in the end, my gut is telling me that we're going to regret it. So I I I mean, obviously, I made the motion, but I feel I feel pretty strongly that this is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I I'm very confused as to the purpose of this meeting this evening. I I understand why we're here, but perhaps the Superintendent or the Human Resources Ms. Stark could provide me some background on how does we got here? Because my understanding is is that this is we're here because Nezdek has has looked at the salary that we're offering and has decided at this juncture that we're not being competitive. So I guess my question would be, how do we get to this point i- i- in the in the selection process? Because my understanding is there's already been a pool of candidates who've already applied, they've already gone through these roundtable interviews. And and now and Nezdek is coming back with this recommendation. So perhaps somebody could just shed some light on why it is that very late in the game, we're getting this recommendation from Nezdek.
Well, I think actually, Anne Marie, I'll have you start here and and just kind of explain the process and, you know, for for a and even I think as much as saying like, we can't ask them, like, that's not something that we can ask of them. And so I think I think the committee could could hear that. And then I think that ties in with what Kathy was saying earlier about policies. So Kathy, I think you might want to weigh in on that, too. And and I think at this point, I I think too, Kathy, I'd leave it to you because we had talked about this and I remember when Nezdek called me, I sent an email around to all of you at that point in time, saying Nezdek is saying, you know, they've got some concerns about about our our pay scale. And again, we we have the we have the choice of just leaving the pay scale as it is or moving it up. And because the policy is in play that it is, you know, I I I talked to Kathy about it and she said, well, I think we should probably bring it forward to the school committee. Now, I hope I'm teeing this up right, Kathy. If I'm not, or Anne Marie, then.
Again, you know, I I would say that it, so when we when I got that from you, there was something and, you know, I I will readily admit that four or five years ago, I was more on top of these policies than I am, I have been, I would say, last couple of years. Because there were so many things in play and so many things that we were uncovering that were not right. And so when we got that email from you and that the superintendent does do the hire and offer the salary, but something was not connecting for me. And so I went back and I looked and I found the policy and indeed the school committee sets the the range. So and it's within that range that the school, that the superintendent exercises through discretion to offer a salary. So I think that in 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 different times when we are not so inundated with other issues, I might have, it might have dawned on me earlier that this is what we need to do. Um, so that's why we're here. And even in the process, it never occurred to me to ask as the chair and and with the background knowledge I have about this policy in particular and another one related to creating positions that were were never actualized by the school committee prior to actually Kurt Bates being interim. So does that help, Joseph? You understand what?
I think Anne Marie probably has a piece here, too.
I'll find if you look, if you spend any time looking on school spring, which is where educational jobs, not that I do, where educational jobs are typically posted, or any of the Nezdek or MASC postings that come out. Most often, they don't have a salary range on the on the job posting. And there was a new law, I don't know if it was two years, maybe the way time goes by, it might be three years by now, but within the last couple of years, that making it illegal to ask a candidate what they're earning now. So that we really kind of go blind in the process. You can't ask that question until you're at the stage where you are ready to make an offer. So when we came up with our finalists, Nezdek called each of each of them, our consultant. Up until that point, the identity of the candidates, as I described in my updates over the last little bit, has been confidential. You know, nobody knew who was applying and who wasn't. So she called each of the candidates and said, you're they're being selected as finalists and said, you know, we'd like to make a finalist of you now, but that would mean that your name would be made public. So are you willing to move forward in the process? And what is the salary remains that you're expecting? So that was the first really we heard of the expectations of the salary of the salary of potentially the salary of the candidates and that. And really, we have not said anything until just now about what we were thinking. So that's how that works.
Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I I'm still confused because you hire the consultant to provide a service in securing top level candidates for the principal's position. Don't they make a recommendation at the very beginning of this process based on the size of the school and the makeup of the school and what have you, as to what the salary range should be?
No. Because there are so many other variables that come into play. So because it's not a unit A or a unit C position. And so it's really based on the individual, which is why the range has, why there's a a range there as opposed to a specific salary.
Joseph? Okay, Amy?
Thanks. I saw Rich's hand up before mine.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rich. Do you want to speak? And then Amy?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be I'll be really brief, Amy. Thank you for that. Thank you for yielding your time, as it were. Yeah, I just I'd share Joe's concern. I I understand intimately that the law about not reporting your income. I just would have expected our consulting partner to have done their due diligence to be more accurate. So to me, it is perplexing to be this far into the process and be surprised like this.
Anne Marie, I think Anne Marie's got, would like to respond.
They didn't give us, they didn't give us inaccurate information, but much is the, you know, the law tells us that we can't ask somebody, what are you making now while they're in the interview process? I think the spirit of that probably extends to the person acting on our behalf, not not doing the sly, you know, sly move on the side, you know, to get to get that same information. They didn't. I don't want people to be left with the impression that Nezdek misled us in any way or was underhanded. That's not what happened at all.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's not so much that they misled us, but perhaps they didn't do their due diligence.
Thank you. Amy?
Thank you. Um, two. One point I'd like to make and then a question. I guess the point I'd like to make is I feel like time is of the essence here because there are other comparable districts also in a, you know, undergoing a search for a high school principal and you know, whether or not we were told this. It would have been nice to know this earlier, but we weren't. Here we are. So I feel like now we know and we we need to take action on it sooner rather than later. But the other question I have is whether Nezdek as part of their services defines comparable districts. And if so, if that's what the basis of the Personnel Subcommittee's range is based on, you know, I just want to make sure that we're defining the range within the right comparable reference.
Sorry. Um, hang on. We were provided with a list of several districts in the, well, in and around the area, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, sixteen districts with a low of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's near Gansett Regional, which is Templeton and Phillipston, and a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which is Somerville. And, um, the median was around one forty-five. And so it's based on that that we we came up with with the range for ourselves, understanding that there are districts that pay much more, but it seems that, you know, against it, in my experience, is is really low. I know that there are organizations that may be MASS or it may be Anne Marie's professional organization that sends out annually a list of all the districts with all the non-union positions and all the salaries. So based on this information, and Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, this is where our recommendation has come from for a range of one forty-five to one sixty.
And many, many of those districts are the districts that we would be considered comparable to and in 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 our vicinity and competitive. And we also wanted Anne Marie's as our HR person, we wanted her recommendation.
Other comments? Leah?
Just very quickly, I don't want to belabor this too badly, but I think that all of us understand the consequences of leadership in our district and how impactful it can be. And I am hoping that we can put into place another leader to team with the rest of the great leaders in our district. Because, you know, this is actually not that much money, what we're talking about here. And it could actually cost us a lot more in an alternate scenario, if you guys know what I mean. We understand what it can cost if we don't really put our money where our mouth is. So I would like to move forward with this.
Thank you. Any other last questions or comments? So the motion is to approve a range of a hundred and forty-five to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the position of high school principal. We had Mike made the motion and it was seconded by, I want to say Leah. Okay. So if there are no objections, I will call the vote. And I will start with Leah.
Yes, indeed.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
No.
Rich?
He's not here.
I think we lost Rich a while ago.
Okay, N A or A. Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and me. Yes. So the vote is.
Rich is back.
Came back.
Which is which is back.
On the motion.
I'm sorry, the motion was.
Was to approve a salary range for the high school principal position of one forty-five to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I vote no.
Okay. So we have nine yes, two no, zero abstain, the motion passes. Okay, and that is our only agenda item. And so at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Steve and Mary seconded. Steve made it Mary seconded. Okay, I say yes. Let's adjourn. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
And we are adjourned. Good work. Thirty-three minutes. You guys rap.